Number thirteen, lucky thirteen, financial report for the six months ended in December. Welcome Spencer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight I will be, will be providing a high level overview of the first six months of financial activities for the general fund and both of the city's utility funds for 2019, 2020. We will be providing a more detailed budget overview to city council and staff as we get ready for the goal setting workshop very soon. The general fund overview, the original 1920 budgeted expenses were forty-four point six million. To that we added grant funded appropriations of six hundred forty-one thousand, prior year purchase order commitments, five hundred eleven thousand six sixty-five, negotiation appropriations, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred, and other items totaling eighty-six thousand seven hundred. The total current budgeted expenditures are just under forty-six point seven million. Since revenues are on a cash basis and property tax revenues are not received until February and May each year, and we prepaid the annual unfunded actuarial liability in July for nineteen twenty to avoid costs of CalPERS interest charges. Our general fund has a net deficit as of December thirty-first. This is typical and is not our, it's not alarming. It merely represents a cash flow issue and with the city's pooled cash reserves, it doesn't represent a long-term problem. By the end of the fiscal year, the city will once again have a positive fund balance in the general fund. In the revenue slides, the yellow represents the percentage of actual amounts received and the gray kind of taupey looking color, I can't even see that color, being the remaining portion of the one hundred percent of budgeted amount not yet received for the city's top four revenues. Since we are fifty percent through the fiscal year as of December thirty-first, this slide gives the appearance that we are way under budget on our revenues. However, I'd like to again assure the city council that this is not the case. Again, it is merely a, a timing difference as we're waiting for some of those cash flow, those revenues that only come in during the second half of the year. The slide shows a small, actually almost in, in, nonexistent property tax revenue, but that again, those first payments won't be coming until February. Well, they've already, the first payment's already come in, but as far as this slide goes, as of December thirty-first, we wouldn't, we would not have received the first payment. By year end, we project that the property tax revenues will be right on track with budgeted projections. The total assessed valuations for the city's general fund were up about five percent and finance projected an increase of four point three percent when putting together the nineteen twenty budget. The details of the categories, the details of the categories of changes in assessed values were included in the written report that went along with the staff report. Sales tax is the city's largest general fund revenue source. We track the most recent fifteen quarters of data on both a cash and adjusted basis. The cash basis is based upon the actual receipts from the CDTFA and which pays, which pays to the city compared to the same quarter of the previous year. The adjusted basis data is provided in the city's sales, by the city's sales tax auditor after the impact of any accounting adjustments, mispayments and/or double up payments are factored. Most of this data is positive, however, you can see that sales tax has been volatile and is difficult to predict into the future. Motel revenues exceeded the twenty-five percent expected. We didn't expect revenues to reach fifty percent as the December quarter revenues are not due and, or received until January twenty twenty. Building permit revenues are at fifty-four point two percent of budget estimates showing the seasonal uptick of development, development activity in the warmer summer and fall months. Special police services are at twenty-one and a half percent of the amount budgeted and police, business licenses are only at seven point nine. Again, staff is not concerned with the low percentage of business license revenues because of the, the timing differences. We're only just now collecting business license renewals. Finance currently anticipates the majority of the city's general fund revenues to be on target with budget estimates by the end of the fiscal year. Fifty point eight percent of budgeted amounts for salaries and benefits have been spent. The amount expended exceeds fifty percent because of the city's prepayment of the CalPERS UAL for the entire year at the, during the first month of the fiscal year. When I recalculated the amount, including only one half of the UAL payment, the percentage expended for salaries and benefits was only forty-four point nine percent, showing about eight hundred fifty-three thousand in budgetary savings halfway through the year. Forty-three point eight percent of the amounts budgeted for operating material supplies and services expenses has been expended halfway through the year. Total general fund expenditures equal fifty point one percent of the amount budgeted as of December thirty-first. And reviewing expenses halfway through the fiscal year, all departments were in line with budgetary expectations. Before moving on to the utility funds, wanted to provide the city council with a summary of the city's unfunded pension liabilities as of June thirty, two thousand nineteen. This slide shows the total assets held by both the safety and miscellaneous pension plans through CalPERS, reduced by the total liabilities owed along with the percentage funded of each. We show that the safety plans have an unfunded liability of forty-three point one million, which is up from thirty-six point five million last year. And the miscellaneous plan has an unfunded liability of thirty-six point nine million, up from thirty-three point eight million last year. The total net unfunded pension liabilities are seventy-nine point nine million, and that is offset by the balance in the pension stabilization trust of two point nine million, which will be, after the additional discretionary payment, the balance will be two point four The water fund operating revenues are at fifty point eight percent of budget. The water service revenue increases last approved were, there were ten percent and that was effective in July first of two thousand eighteen in order to cover operating debt service and infrastructure renewal and replacement costs. Revenues from billings are being generated as planned, however, consumption declined in five out of the first six months of the fiscal year, thereby causing, thereby causing revenues to drop. I'll show you the details of that on the next slide. In just looking at the total shown here, it would appear that revenues are coming in well below expected with, with the city, the expected budget and coming in a hair over fifty percent of estimated revenues halfway through the fiscal year with the high usage months already passed. The revenues are typical, typically higher in July, August, September during the summertime when people are irrigating their yards and their gardens more. Capital connection fee revenues are at forty-two percent of the amount budgeted. Operating expenditures are forty-two point six of the amount budgeted and are less than budgeted expectations at this time of year as well. In reviewing where the savings are occurring, it is mostly in two areas, salaries and benefits. There are five point eight five vacant positions as of December thirty-first and the operate, operating and maintaining account, maintenance accounts were less than expected as well. Debt service to date includes only the twelve point, twelve, the December first interest payment, so interest, principal and interest payments on the city's outstanding bonds are usually paid also on July, or June first. Continuing with water utility, this slide shows you the monthly total of all water customer billing sent out by the city in the month we did the billing. The golden highlight shows the percentage change in revenues billed as compared to the same month of the previous year. Our stakeholders might expect that, and a zero percent rate increase to generate about zero percent in additional revenues. However, this isn't the case because of the change in customer consumption. The percent change in consumption is highlighted in gray. Guess you can see that down there on the slide. And so you can, you can see the change in water consumptions by customers billed from the same month of the previous year. In four months, the customer consumption declined and in both July and December it increased. You average the percent change in the revenues of, for the six months period, it equals an average decrease of four point one percent. As I mentioned preached previously, July through September are typically our highest months of billings. Customers conserved water by reducing the amount they used and the city billed in the August through November billing cycles, or simply did not need to use as much due to weather conditions. So if this was a more mild summer than the year before, then that's what you're seeing. It is worth mentioning that the city bills a month after the water is utilized by customers. Our billing months of August through November are actually the water utilized by customers in July through October. We read meters at the first of every month and then bill at the end of the month for the prior month's consumer consumption. Waste water fund, fund operating revenues are at forty-nine point three percent of budget, right in line with budget expectations. Capital connection fee revenues are at twenty-four point six of the amount budgeted. I discussed with our public works director, Diana Langley, the reasons why water connection fees are higher, are a higher percentage of budget received than the waste water connection fees. And it turns out the water connection fees are based on the size of the connections, such as one, one inch or two inch meter, pipes or connections, whereas sewer connection fees are more of a fixed amount. Operating expenditure, expenditures are at forty-three point seven percent of the amount budgeted and there are, they are therefore less than expectations. In reviewing why they are less than anticipated is due to two categories again, salaries and benefits, there were five point three five percent vacancies, or sorry, five point three five vacant positions. And professional services are significantly less than budgeted, however, funds are encumbered. So we will expect, we'll expect those expenditures to happen later and the, the budget will catch up. In reviewing the details of the accounts, the city has issued purchase orders indicating that we've contractually committed to expending the funds, but have not actually issued a check to the vendor thereby, thereby incurring the actual expenditure. So finance has been tracking the amount of capital connection fees available for payment of debt service for many years due to the decline in development activities. The decline in development has resulted in a corresponding decline in connection fee revenues received by the city. Finance maintains separate funds for capital infrastructure purposes for both water and wastewater. We pay debt service on the bonds previously issued according to the percentages that utilities provides between future customer benefit and existing customer benefit for the capital projects completed using the bond proceeds. The amounts shown on this slide are the total capital cash reserves available for each of the city's utilities along with annual debt service, annual capital debt service paid from each. The city council has been advised for many years that staff expected the water capital connection fee fund to go into a deficit position with a low level of development activity. Finance expresses the calculation as a ratio indicating the number of years of debt service that the city can pay without drawing the capital funds into a negative balance. For the water fund, it shows the fund has about twenty months of, of coverage. And for wastewater, the fund has about fourteen months of cash available for debt service. The water fund has declined more rapidly than the wastewater fund due to the higher level of annual debt service required to be paid. What this means for the water fund is that from a cash flow perspective, the operating fund has to cover the debt service until development activities increase. That's all I have for you this evening. I'm happy to entertain any questions. I also should mention, I do have accountant to Lynn Hale in the audience, and she's here tonight with a pile of paperwork to help me answer any of your questions should be, should be needed.
All right, thank you Spencer.
You're welcome.
This is a note and file item. Does any member of the public care to speak on the topic? All right, any member of the council?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
A couple of things. Spencer, thank you for your presentation this evening. Want to go back to the unfunded pension liability and the discretionary payment. Just a point of clarification to where in the years past, we have made that additional discretionary payment. This fiscal year, we held off on that as we went through the PERS workshop and we have not had that come before the council yet to authorize any additional payment. So at this point, we should still have the same amount in our PERS account because we have not authorized an additional payment yet. So there shouldn't have been one sent.
So councilman, councilman Shaw, we, the payment was authorized as part of the budget resolution back in June. And so it was staff's direction after the pension workshop to send the payment. So the payment, the payment is, has been sent, but if the, if staff receives separate direction, we can definitely.
We need to take a second look at that because there, it was originally as part of the annual budget approved and it was set aside, but it was also at the same time looked at to go through the workshop and come back before the council for approval before we sent a supplemental payment. So we definitely want to find out where that came from and an update on that. I thought maybe that was just anticipating sending one out, but we have not authorized that pending that, so definitely need to follow up on that. The second thing that I want to go over is I know it will be coming back before us. When we look at all of our budgetary issues and things coming up, is you talked about the declining revenues from water and how they've gone down. While we, I do fully realize that our revenues have gone down, consumption's gone down. And that was to be expected. And what we can expect our residents is to pay more for less consumption and that was what was going on with previous council was, great, we're going to encourage you to conserve, but we're going to move the rates up and it's going to continue going up. These are obstacles that we as a council have to work through and as we get ready to go through the budget are going to have to take in consideration. But what I want to make sure is at least one council member is that we're not looking and taking the track of, we'll just raise rates and tax more and go more because we do expect certain things if people are conserving. We expect that revenue to go down and we need to be matching that with our expenses. And I know it's, it's done well, but at the same time, when you went through that, you said they've been decreasing. Just a note, we expected it to go down because consumption went down, so.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Through the mayor. Spencer, I think, I really appreciate the charts that you do and to walk us through the whole process. Between your report and the report, I believe that happened in December, there was another financial reporting in December and, and now here, looking at potential revenue and the amount of revenue that we're having coming into the city and the expenditures. So it seems to me that part of the reason that water and wastewater have not, are, perhaps in deeper water, to say the least, is because there hasn't been some hiring of staffing and that's kind of saved those budgets a little bit. Is, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes, the salary, part of the reason the expenditures are not as high as expected is due to vacancies.
Otherwise, if we would had all those vacancies fulfilled, then the expenditures would be higher and the revenue be lower.
It wouldn't actually pull the revenue lower, just the, the delta between, the difference between the two would be smaller.
Smaller, okay. So then, I, I, when you talk about the other particular, is it the bond where you were talking about the timeframe between the year of how much funding we have availability? I think it was like your last slide. Keep going, keep going. There. So for our capital fund debt coverage, if, we're putting money into those accounts, correct? And where is the money coming in from those account, the money's coming, where's the money coming, coming from that goes into those accounts?
So what I was referring to was money that would come from connection fees.
Okay.
And so connection fees are reliant on development, so building, building projects that need to connect to the service.
Right, and we haven't been doing a lot of development, so that's causing for those funds not to, to dwindle down to a twenty month or twenty-two month, whatever, which is approximately a two-year period or less. If we don't develop in this community, then, then if we are not doing our good job here in the city and as a council, bringing in development to grow a little bit, a couple years down the road, if we don't do as well as we should, how are we going to pay for this?
So essentially what you're doing in the water fund now is that with that, that negative thirty-two thousand, or sorry, in the wastewater fund, but what you're, what you're doing is basically covering it through the operating, the operating account.
Operating funds.
Yes.
And the operating fund comes from?
Rate pairs.
Right. And we didn't increase the rate, we kept the rate the same, but we're having less usage, so the rate, so the amount of revenue is not coming in to cover it all. I'm simplifying it in my way.
Yes, yes, you, you're going the right way, yes.
Okay. So I, I, I'm just, between that and looking at the other very first slide, go back to the very first slide, please.
That's the very first one, how about this one?
Okay. When you, when you're saying, oh, don't worry if we're in a deficit, the balance, you know, the money will come in later, explain that a little bit more so if the public is not clearly getting all of that, because when you look at that, you're like, okay, there's a lot of little deficits in there that could cause a little, a bit of worry.
So the, so the revenues, the revenues for the city don't, don't come in evenly each, each month of the fiscal year. So we receive our, two of our very largest payments, so for instance, sales tax comes in pretty regularly throughout the year. That's half of the general fund or thirty-four percent of the general fund revenue, we'll say. And the next largest chunk of the general fund revenue is in property tax. Well, property tax is.
Sales tax is the thirty-something and then property tax is that?
Yeah, property tax, combined or, combined or, or most of the, most of the general.
Sales tax, second property tax.
Most of the general fund revenue. And so the, the property tax bill gets calculated in October and residents, homeowners pay it and, and business owners pay it in December and March. And so the city doesn't actually get the check from the county who collects property taxes until February and May.
Okay.
And so that big chunk of revenue, you know, half, the, the second largest revenue source for the general fund doesn't hit until the spring of the fiscal year. It's property tax. And so all the while, we have our expenditure, our expenditures are pretty well spread over twelve months of the year. And so we rely on the, we know that we're going to be a little bit deficit, but we have money in treasury that covers that until, until we get the revenue in. And so that's how we, that's how we balance our cash flow.
Cool, can you go to the slide on the property, on the, on the sales tax, please? So explain to me the difference between quarter, one first quarter eighteen, nineteen and the quarter right now nineteen, twenty.
Explain the difference?
Well.
So why is one?
Why is quarter, first quarter eighteen, nineteen at fifteen point nine percent and right now we're at a negative nine point six percent cash basis?
So about a little more than a year ago, the California Department of, oh, CDTFA tax and, anyway, the, the people that collect the, collect the, the taxes used to be Board of Equalization.
Okay.
They have, they did a computer conversion. And so a lot of this volatility that we're seeing, starting in around seventeen, eighteen, maybe, maybe second quarter seventeen, eighteen, is due to a glitch in their ability to collect and assign taxes to the right, to the right county, to the right jurisdiction. And so we've been, we've been, they've been trying to make up for that, that glitch. They, they eventually figured out, they audit each, each quarter, they audit each quarter and they say, oh, well, during our computer conversion, we misapplied all these taxes to different jurisdictions. And so they work on fixing that. And so we might get, we might get second quarter seventeen, eighteen tax revenue in what, what should have been, been reported in second quarter, not until the fourth quarter or the first quarter of the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And so it's been very volatile in that way. Sales tax is always volatile because it depends on, it's, the differences are based on each individual business in the entire jurisdiction. And so if you have, you know, some of our taxpayers sell very large ticket items, let's say like very expensive equipment. And, and if they have a really great sales quarter and move a lot of equipment, then the, the receipts are going to be fantastic. But we can't, we can't assume that first quarter of eighteen, nineteen, if they had, if that were so, we were so high because of really great sales of this really big equipment, we can't assume that every first quarter, that, that same, you know, number of equipment are going to be sold. And so it's, it's really just, it really just varies on consumers.
I appreciate you explaining that because I, it was just, it was interesting to see that one quarter, we're, you know, pretty high on that cash basis coming in and then the comparable, another quarter, the same quarter, then we're in the negative. So that helps me understand better. Thank you for, for clarifying that. I think my biggest concern is that we're not in the deficit, that we're looking towards some sort of method to grow in our city. And I know we have our impact fees and the committees, boge-steward and the works, so those will help tremendously. I hope so that if we're able to do some of that, then we're going to be able to strengthen our revenue at this point. Otherwise, you know, I, I sense that within our restaurants and retails are not, I mean, they produce tax revenue for us for sure, they're not the larger ticket items that potentially could give us additional tax revenue. Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I may clarify just real quick. To clarify the chart up there, and I'm glad you left it up, that's really a timing issue as you were trying to say from the CDFTA, because they were so far behind and they were catching up and that's why the first quarter of eighteen, nineteen was inflated the way it was. In order for us to get a true picture, and I want to make sure that anybody in the public doesn't get the idea that we're suddenly going backwards in sales tax, we would have to really look at a rolling twelve-month ongoing revenue cycle to see it because that's how much out of whack the state had the sales tax revenue collection and distribution. And that's where the big spike of fifteen point nine came from. That was the quarter they were catching up and trying to get it back on high center. So when you look at it, you're probably going to find that our revenue stream is pretty stable, if not slightly increasing because, you know, GDP has been up. You just take a look at our economy, you look at all the new businesses here, there's been more sales tax revenue. But we'd have to look at it exactly what revenue was, was brought in on a rolling twelve-month cycle to get a true picture to see if we're maintaining that average because that's, while that's true, that's a skewed chart because of CDFTA. It's not your fault, it's theirs. But thank you.
Yes, I think that's the purpose of, of including the adjusted basis because what HDL companies does for us as our tax auditors, they go through and they analyze the, those timing differences and they, they analyze again, like missing payments and double up payments and they make adjustments to, to those. So sometimes CDTFA could make a mistake and actually give us twice the revenue that we were supposed to receive and then they're going to take that back. But the, the sales tax auditors can see that and that's, so the, the adjusted basis on the right column is, has been, woo, has been smoothed about as much as it's going to be smoothed. It's probably not perfect, but it's going to, it's been smoothed about as much as it can. So you can see that in first quarter nineteen, twenty, we actually, we are, we are positive. In fact, through the whole, the whole slide, you can see that on adjusted basis, we're positive even if they're, even if we're flat at point one percent or point five percent.
Through the mayor. Thanks Spencer, very thorough report. I guess my question is, we seem to continually rely on salary savings and this is historic in this city. At some point, one would hope that through recruitment and retention, we wouldn't have to, to delve back into, you know, vacant positions to, to subsidize or to even the, the expenditures. Given what you presented tonight, are there, is there any thought from, from the senior leadership team about any mid-year budget adjustments? Or are you projecting at this point that, you know, we're good right now, we'll Or are you projecting at this point that, you know, we're good right now, we'll take another look in a few months and see? Or, you know, I guess, I'm aware, you know, through our dealings with, with you and other members of staff, in some accounts, we've, we've authorized a little more expenditure than was budgeted. And I'm assuming that some of that is being offset by the salary savings, but any, is there anything you can tell us here at the mid-year point about anything that's internally going on in regards to taking a look at expenses and modifying or changing anything?
I don't think I have anything to report on, on that express, that, that very point, but I can say that I do appreciate that, that you're pointing out that these salary savings are one-time in nature. They can't be relied on for ongoing expenditures or commitments, for sure, but I'm not aware of, I've not been part of a discussion where we were talking about reducing our moving budget around in a, in the mid, mid-year, other than, other than what was brought before you tonight for capital, capital items.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Spencer. Very well done. Looking forward to working with you soon.